It's a call to order the school committee meeting of March 23rd, 2021. I take a motion to open the meeting.
Moved.
Moved by Ellen. Seconded by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. All right. So typically, public comment is located later on in our agenda, and we can still do it later on in our agenda, but I just wanted to note that we have several honored guests here tonight with us, and so I'd actually like to start the meeting off by welcoming them if there's no objections. So we have Rep. Sullivan, Rep. Dubois, and Senator Timmeltie. Senator Brady here to see us tonight as well. And welcome all of you. Thank you for coming. Would any one of you like to come up? Thank you. Give a microphone over here.
What was it for where the microphone was?
Yep.
Thank you all for having us this evening. I know it's been quite different during the last year in the pandemic, so it's actually nice to be able to see some faces, even if it's all masked up. So thank you for having us. I'm Representative Sullivan. I represent three out of the four precincts here in East Bridgewater, and with me is Representative Michelle Dubois as well. We both represent East Bridgewater. So we came tonight because it's sad to see you go. You know, we were very much appreciative of what you've done, especially in this past year and during a pandemic, and keeping, you know, the community informed, the students engaged, and being able to facilitate those conversations that are hard but much needed to have. So I hope you're on to better and bigger endeavors and get to enjoy a little bit of regular, normal life eventually, hopefully in 2021, 2022 to come. Michelle, I don't know if you want it, sorry, Rep. Dubois, I don't know if you want to state your words before we read the citation.
Well, thank you so much, and I appreciate you taking the lead on this, Representative, and thank you, Rob, and Teresa at home for your service to the city, to the town of East Bridgewater. And I look forward to talking finances with you, Rob, moving forward, if you wouldn't mind. So if you can just read it, and I appreciate this.
Sure. So we do have a citation from the House of Representatives, and I'll read for you, Rob. I know we have one for Teresa as well, and unfortunately, she can't make it tonight, but I'd be more than happy to give it to you so you can give it to her as well. So be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Robert Ruda in recognition of your volunteerism to the East Bridgewater School Committee, serving the students, parents, and the town of East Bridgewater with distinction from 2018 to 2021. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 23rd day of March, 2021, the State House of Boston in Massachusetts, signed by Speaker Ronald Mariano, and I still mess that up, offered by myself and Representative Michelle Dubois.
Just thank you.
So congratulations and thank you. And.
Free job, thank you for your service.
Do you want to get a quick picture?
Please.
I would love it.
Rob, I can, I'll take it.
Come on up. Where do you want to be?
There with everybody in the background, that'd be great.
That'd be nice, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Rep. Sullivan, Rep. Dubois, thank you so much for coming tonight. We really do appreciate it. Senators Brady and Timmeltie, we're honored to have you here as well.
Mr. Chair, everyone, how are you?
Excellent.
As our colleagues in the House said, we're still living under different circumstances, but hopefully, as we move forward, we'll get our friends and colleagues vaccinated and the people in the most need, and get to live back in somewhat of a normal life. It's been tough on a lot of families out there, and both our colleagues in the House and colleagues in the Senate, we're trying to make sure that we get enough vaccines delivered to our districts all over the Commonwealth, so. And I have to confess, I used to serve in the school committee. I was a lot thinner and had many less gray hairs in those days, in 1996, in the city of Brockton. So I'm honored to, and I'll take this so you can hear me, but I'm honored to present this citation. I know Senator Timmeltie has one as well, as our House colleagues did. This is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereback sends us congratulations to Teresa Malz in recognition of her selfless volunteerism and dedication to civic duty to the town of East Bridgewater by serving as a school committee member for the past six years, and it's signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, the Clerk, Michael Hurley, my colleague and good friend, Senator Walter Timmeltie, and myself, Mike Brady. And I'll give this to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Doctor, Mr. Chair, distinguished members of the committee, and of course, our student representative, thank you. And of course, thank you very much for keeping notes here. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Today, obviously, Bob, it's your time, and we're privileged and honored to be here today to honor your service and, of course, Teresa's service. We greatly appreciate what you do here in the East Bridgewater School Department, and of course, on this committee, and of course, under your leadership, Mr. Chair, and your leadership, Doctor. So thank you. And Rob, of course, I know you don't like a lot of attention, but of course, you're getting it today, whether you like it or not, and it's very well deserved. As Senator Brady alluded to earlier, and of course, it's a privilege to be here with Senator Brady and Rep. Sullivan and Rep. Dubois, we have citations from the State Senate, and of course, as you know, the House of Representatives, and the document states as follows. Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts State Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Robert Ruda in recognition of your selfless volunteerism and dedication to civic duty to the town of East Bridgewater by serving as a school committee member for the past three years. And be it further known, Bob, that the Massachusetts State Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the State Senate and attested to, and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, Bob. It has been signed by our Senate President, Karen E. Spilka, attested to by our Clerk, Michael Hurley, and offered by myself, Walter F. Timmeltie, and Michael D. Brady. So congratulations. We're very proud of you. We thank, Keisha Dockall, my district director, is here. Keisha, thank you very much. And of course, Jim Breton from my office. I see Curtis over there. And long story short, we're very proud of the work that you and Teresa have done here, and we are honored to be here tonight. So thank you very much.
Senator Brady, what do you think?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, have we been the reps up for picture?
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Rep. Sullivan, Dubois, Senator Brady, and Timmeltie, we thank you so much for your time out, and for all of your people with you, thank you so much. We appreciate your support of us as well. Thank you.
It's beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Before we move on, I just want to say, Rob, you know, and I will talk to Teresa in my own time, but I just want to thank you for your time on the committee. You actually were the first person I met on this committee before you were even elected member. As a scout parent, I remember talking to you about why you were running, and, you know, honestly, I was kind of on the fence about it, and my conversation with you is what tipped me in the direction of thinking that this would be something great for our kids. So thank you for your support over the years, and thank you for everything you've done for our kids as well.
Thank you, Tim.
Appreciate it. Back to the agenda. So we have a report from the East Bridgewater Junior-Senior High School Student Advisory Council representative, Kira, how are you?
Yeah, of course. So first, I'd like to just say my congrats again to Teresa and Rob. So then, just getting to it, the class of 2021 is selling prom tickets in Mr. Ferrioli's room, cash or check out to town of East Bridgewater. They are $70 plus whatever dues students have left, and sales will be going from March 29th until April 1st. Recently, we had our DECA State Awards. I'm very excited to announce that I will be, I placed, and I will be moving on to the international competition in May. Many other students have also qualified for leadership positions and will also be attending. March Madness is currently running this week. Today was superhero day, tomorrow was Zoom day, Thursday is twin day, and then Friday is class colors day. FLHS is running their foreign language week next week. More info on that to come over the announcements for students. Again, Triumph Relay for Life is happening in mid-June. If you would like to donate to the American Cancer Society, I recommend that you reach out to someone either in the music department or a member of Triumph. And then, Mr. EVHS was last Saturday night. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Mitch Carey on winning. That's it.
Excellent.
Congratulations, Kira.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Kira.
Thank you.
All right. Report of the Standing Committee. We have a second reading of the proposed changes recommended from the Policy Subcommittee on Section I Instruction, Section J Students. I'm not going to ask that we go through these individually, but we've all had a chance to review them. I know we had one that we made minor revisions to based on start dates in September, but I believe what was submitted to us at the last meeting was the updated one, so we're not even going to get into that.
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, we're going to, it's an action item for later on, so do we have anything from the Policy Subcommittee that you wanted to add or comment on regarding these policies?
Nope.
Okay. Superintendent's Corner.
Well, we are back and in full swing, and the kids are just, the kids are fantastic. Our teachers and staff have just been amazing throughout this process. It's not easy. It wasn't easy, but our teachers and our staff have made it look easy. So it's important to note that protocols and policies and the things that we talked about, that we said we were going to do, we're doing. I want to thank Lucini Bus Lines. They have been very good with us. They're doing their due diligence. They're working with us, we're working with them, we're making calls, they're calling us. We've had lots of parents opt back on for transportation after it began, so that's good. And we also are getting more and more students to come back to school that had previously opted for the remote learning, and now they would like to come back because they see what we're doing, the diligence that the teachers and the staff are doing in the classrooms. Our cafeterias look terrific. They were all set up when we started back. Our transportation, we are following the protocols. I know that there was, I think, somebody made a comment today someplace along the line that I received throughout the day. The protocols are being in place at all times. In the elementary level, which elementary is really K through eight under DESI, but we'll say K through six for us. K through six, we can have three to a seat. So when people do say, well, you have three to a seat, we don't have three to a seat because we don't need that right now, but that is the regulations that we are on, and most of them, and most, anybody that has a sibling, they're sitting with their sibling, and I can tell you this, that some siblings have said, I don't want to sit with my brother, or I don't want to sit with my sister right now, and if we've had the room, we've allowed them to move at this time. So I can tell you that a lot of your kids, they want to sit with other kids now. So cafeteria's doing well. We're back. We're looking at April 5th full on Wednesdays, everybody coming in. The Central School is back. Mitchell has the remote teachers. I signed the last remote teacher today, but she's also, she was here last week. She is working with Mr. Gentile, Mrs. Dupre, too. We have one, one remote doing three, four, grades three and four, and the other remote doing five and six. We have at the Central School.
A halftime for kindergarten and a full time for students who are grades one and two.
Are in place, working with Mrs. Byrne and Mrs. Nichols. So we are in place. We had a conversation with the Association yesterday about Wednesdays here at the high school. I think we'll, we'll have a good conversation. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I look to see everybody back on April 5th, or the week of April 5th, which that Wednesday is a professional development day, so it won't be till the following week, but we're going to follow the April 5th departmental guidelines for K through eight, and then, or K through six, and then seven through 12, we'll follow them in. Very pleased with how, what's going on in the district. We did have a meeting with the Commissioner today. MCAS at this time is still on. There has been no pullback, and the, the federal, the feds are saying that we're going to test. So we're going to test MCAS, and we're just waiting for some more clarification on dates. Like Karen and I and Dr. Williams sat there and listened today to the Commissioner discuss timelines, and can we begin, and can we start putting them on the calendar and start talking about timelines? Yes, we want, we, I'm one of those people that want to make sure that we're all in and everybody's going to do it, and so we're going to wait for DESI to tell us the, to say, you got to go ahead and, and go, and let's move forward. We have pool testing going on in the district. Mrs. Clifford's going to talk about that. We had last week, and I know that she's going to, Mrs. Clifford will talk about this, but I do want to just, on a, on a great note is, do we have some quarantines right when we started off? Absolutely. Once again, they're not in school contacts. It comes from the outside, it came from some, wherever, and sometimes it takes a day or so for them to get a, for someone to get a telephone call and said, oh, your child or children were a contact. And when we find that out, it goes to Karen, and Karen has to do a lot of legwork, and it takes her, you know, half a morning to do legwork on 19, 20, 22 kids or even more. Karen's doing a terrific job. We leave that up to her, and once again, and I know a lot of people want all the information, and it's just like everything that I've said at the district, you don't need everything right off the bat, just hold on, we're with you, nobody's going to get hurt, we're supporting you, and everybody's safe. Karen's going to talk about a few things tonight about the guidelines that we've been following. We've given you all the data that we have. We are right on top of this. I can say about this high school, and I was, and I've spoke to my colleagues over the last two weeks, two or three times on meetings, I can tell you, this high school, this seven through 12 junior-senior high school, is doing such a great job of protocols, wearing their masks, being where they're supposed to be. Seniors are got, being able to have this open campus has really alleviated some of that congestion that we do have at times, but I can tell you, the seniors are staying more than leaving. We do see a lot coming in and out in the mornings, but as the day goes on, you don't see, you see less and less because we go to lunch, and then they have sports and this and that. Our athletic fields are packed. We've had two football games. I was out there today for a track and field meet. Terrific to watch the kids. We were up against Abington here. The high school, I don't think, we haven't seen the quarantine numbers go up. I think there's a lot, I think they're, they're young adults, they, they, they understand a little bit more than the younger kids of where they should be and how they need to do things, and they're just doing, they want to be here, and people need to recognize that. The kids do want to be back in school, and I'm glad that we made the decision, and thank you all for supporting us and supporting what our initiatives to get back to school and get kids with other peers and get them in front of instructional leadership that we have when it comes to our teachers and staff. The elementary, I can, I can, I witnessed it, I was there at every bus on the opening day, and watching kids jump up and down and scream because they see a student, a friend that they've only seen on a Zoom, and kindergartners coming off that bus for the first time, it was like the first day of school. It was nerve wracking, it was scary. We had some students stop and say, well, wait a minute now. I've been home, I've been okay, now I don't know where I'm going, and it was just like kindergarten that you've all been at before. Rob, Grace was there a couple of years ago. We, they had the same hands that we've had over the past years, going out and grabbing the students and saying, you're fine, let's walk it in. We had characters out there this year. I want to thank Mrs. Lasly and the Drama Club for coming and helping us that day. It was really fun. The kids love that type of atmosphere. I'm upset that the Commissioner didn't pick my picture because they picked, what did they say, Milton today, a school district today? They had super, they had Spider-Man. You know, we had a Christmas tree. We had lots of other characters out there. They were screaming, the kids, two little boys on the bus in third grade, third grade at Mitchell School, put their arms around each other, and they go, guys, you're not supposed to do that. And they're like, no, take our picture, he's my best friend, and it's the first time I've seen him. It's important because they're gonna, it's going to happen, but this is the way we do things, and this is what schools are about. And we've done a great job. The principals did a tremendous job last week and this week. Karen has been staying on top of it, and I know she's got some information, but I just wanted to let you know that on that area, as much as we were very nervous and concerned, and, and everybody wants healthy and safe, we're healthy and we're safe, and we're doing what needs to happen. I am sure we're going to see quarantines. I am sure we're going to have some other, but the, but we're not seeing it because we're not doing what we need to do. But reminder, youth sports are starting. More and more things are happening outside and in, in enclosed areas. You know, kids are, I saw birthday parties were being advertised the other day for indoor areas. So kids are going to start doing this, and you're going to start to see more and more of these types of events happening. But before Karen just talks, I just want to, because Karen's going to finish us off tonight. At North River Collaborative, we had a capital budget, a capital project. It's in here, we don't need a vote, it was just for your reference as I sit on the board of North River. I needed to bring, bring that to you by law because it is one of our collaboratives that we sit upon, and it's really not doing much to, not much, but we need this building for our kids, so. Karen?
Thank you. Dr. Williams, too.
So you should have a packet of information from me on some COVID updates, if it's okay. I'd like to go from the back. So if you start with the last page, it is the page on the community level COVID. You can see that we are into the green, so East Bridgewater is. Do you not have it?
I don't have it. You don't have it?
Rob, do you have it? Amanda?
No.
So the last page just shows what East Bridgewater is doing. The two pages prior to that gives you a breakdown of the district staff antigen testing that we've been doing on Fridays. This week, we will not antigen test the staff because next week we will be including them in the pooling, moving forward. So it also breaks down the student pool testing. We had one positive pool, you'll see on Thursday, March 11th, at the Mitchell School. There was nine students in that pool. They were retested the next morning. All nine came back negative. We tested them a second time as the protocol, all negative. It was determined, when I worked with the Board of Health, that we had an individual in that pool that was within the 90-day window of having tested positive, so they should not have been included, so that was the reason for the positive.
It's actually amazing that the data can be sorted out to that extent, which is testament to everything that we're doing there.
Well, I think everything all of us have been doing.
Everybody, yes, but.
Following the protocols.
Specific to.
And I share this information with the Board of Health. Sue and I, Sue Malloy and I are talking all the time, so soon as she saw the list of students, she was like, I bet it's this, this issue. So this week, we tested on Monday, five pools at the Central School, six pools at the Mitchell, and 10 at the high school. So we're increasing our pool numbers. The next page is a new pilot that we did today. As the superintendent mentioned, we've had a number of quarantines. We ended up having a significant group at each building that was quarantined because of close contacts. Because there were close contacts in school, although not like a transmission in school, but a close contact in school, we decided to pilot the follow-up testing with the students. So the CDC guidelines say now that we can, you can test between day five and day seven, and if negative, the individual can return to school on day eight. So we thought, these were in-school transmissions, we just got back full in place, that we should offer this to parents. So at the Central School today, we had possible 14 individuals that could have been tested. We tested 10, and that's because three tested at their doctors within the appropriate timeframe. Two of those were negative, one is pending, and one student just did not appear, for whatever reason. So with those students, those 14 individuals, their 14-day quarantine, which is what we've been following, from their contact on March 15th would take them, they would not return to school until March 30th. Two of them, two of them had contact on the 15th. The remainder of the other 12 had contact on the 16th, so they would not have been able to return to school until 3:31. With this protocol, with this pilot that we did, the two students that had. the two students that had contact on the fifteenth were able to return to school today, or the two individuals, I should say. The other twelve will be able to return tomorrow. So that's a total of four or five school days sooner. And sometimes it's going to be a little less because of the way the weekend falls, but all of the students that we tested at the Central School were negative. And then the Mitchell School, you can see we did a pilot. We had twenty-two individuals, two tested at the doctors, one refused to do the follow-up test, and four were no-shows. All of their contact was on the fifteenth. They would not be returning to school until March thirtieth. The, what is it? Sixteen students that tested, so fourteen that we tested and the other two from the, one from the doctors, were all negative, and they were able to walk right into school today after their fifteen-minute test was, the result came. The student that refused to test will follow the guidelines, and if they are asymptomatic through day ten, they will be able to return to, on, to school on day eleven if they're asymptomatic, which is this Friday.
And the four no-shows?
The four no-shows will follow the, as long as they're asymptomatic, they can return on day eleven. Junior, senior high school, sixteen out of seventeen individuals, one tested at the doctor. That result is pending. Four were able to return to school today. The, and the other twelve will return tomorrow.
That's right. Any other questions? Have you seen an increase in student participation as we've gone, gone on?
So the pooling is not increasing as quickly as I would like. I thought the more we did it, and everybody saw that it was negative, and it's not really intrusive, and it doesn't take a lot of time. I thought we would get more consent. I have to say that the cooperation to participate in the pilot was awesome. I mean, even the students that didn't show up, the parents were very cooperative. They thought it was a great thing. So I don't know what happened.
We still sending home requests to enroll kids? I'm just trying to think. I haven't seen anything come home recently. Like, I mean, is it an ongoing thing where parents are being reminded if they want to have their kids participate? Or was it just the initial?
No, I've, I've sent out a couple of reminders, and one follow-up call I made over the weekend, which I thought was, gave me a chuckle, was, I called a parent and said, you know, I sent you an email on Friday, and I just want to follow up to see if you're interested in this, participating in the follow-up testing. And she said, oh, I just saw your name, and I deleted your email. I thought it was the same old thing. I said, well. So I, you know.
Yeah.
We're trying. I'm gonna probably have the building principals put something out too, and, you know, as April vacation comes up. I'm certainly going to put out a communication tomorrow based on these recommendations that I would like us to adopt. So the current CDC guidelines, we did the pilot based on them. I would like us to adopt them moving forward. That students who are close contacts can test, or not just students, in any individual that tests, that is identified as a close contact and asymptomatic can test on day five to seven and return on day eight. That's the current guideline that was passed in December that we've not adopted yet. For in-school contacts, I would like us to continue doing the follow-up testing for families, and I would like us to do that on day eight so that when they come in in the morning, day eight, or as close to, depending on where it falls on the weekend, that then they can go right into school and not have to go home and return another day. For outside contacts, we would follow the same protocol. They would test on their own on day five to seven and return on day eight. And if people do not wish to test, the quarantine is shortened to ten days. As long as they're asymptomatic, they return on day eleven. So the fourteen days is just too long, and so we need to move away from that.
Isn't the current guideline that you can test after day five and return after day eight, though?
Test day five to seven, and you can come in on day eight.
Okay.
That's the guideline.
Oh, I see. So that's the, okay, all right. I misread that. I thought you were saying test on day eight. I get you. All right.
No, we, we will for in-school contacts.
Yeah.
Test them on day eight. So you can technically test them day five or anytime after.
And then they can, if they test negative, come right into school that day. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you, just to attest to what Karen just said, that parents are very appreciative of this. I do know that we did have one, I think it was, hate to give it away, I think it was the Central School, though, that our kids are very, very excited to be here. And they, I think they asked that we not discuss with them why they were getting picked up and why we were sending them home. Let the parents do it. You know, usually the nurse or Karen Clifford would tell them, or if Mrs. Byrne would need to, we would say, hey, you're going to go home for a few days. Parents were like, please don't say anything to him. Please don't say thank, say anything to her. Let us do it at home. So.
Because their kids were too excited about going, and they just didn't want to come into.
Yeah. Yeah, they just, they didn't want to know. So, I mean, they didn't want us to, to be the bear. They said, because let us do it at home. So when we said, when we tried this pilot, very appreciative to get back. It's exciting, and we're just not seeing it at that, that great level, at that age.
So moving, moving forward on the pool testing, my recommendation to the superintendent is that we consider strongly having spring athletes participate in the pool.
Okay.
We don't have all of our athletes participating, and I know some of the neighboring school districts are. Football, I understand, is going to require contact tracing. So if somebody on our team is positive or infected, probably our entire team would be out because of practices and contact. Any team that we play, we would have to contact trace and identify for that other team just who came in contact.
Are you talking about making that a condition of participating in sports? That they, that they participate in the testing? Or is it more, we're going to kind of nudge them in that direction?
I think we'll nudge them that, in that direction. You know, we, the, the MIA is going to take a stance on this, and they've taken the stance on football. We'll be going outside. Everything's changing so rapidly. I think people right now are, I think, very nervous to put a stamp on anything. CDC had to make a decision when, you know, one person went this way and another person went this way. And then they went back and forth for, you know, for, you know, thirty-six hours, and then somebody said, make the decision. Once that decision went, a lot of things happened. I think right now we're in a decision pattern with the, the Rex, with, with, with sports, athletics going outside. It's, it's here. And the MIA's made that decision on football. I think they'll make it for everybody. But I think as Dr. Williams and I spoke to even Mr. Shippey yesterday, about, just about the Wednesdays, in fact, some of those things, it's better to be out ahead of this than to come in from behind. We've done the pool testing. Some school districts are not doing the pool testing. The commissioner continues to ask for more people. It's working for us. It allows us to get back. It, it keeps us moving in the, in a proactive way. I don't want to force people to have to do a lot, you know, these things.
I'm just curious. My kids.
No, but I do think we'll nudge them. I do think, I think our parents are seeing what we're doing. I think that Karen has been, and the district has been transparent when we've talked about all of these things, showing the data and say, hey, listen, we just want to make sure that when we go, when we go to Abington, or when we go to West Bridgewater, or we go to Hanover, we get on the bus, we know what we have getting on the bus. You know, football players, they go out there, and we get a call Monday from a Friday night game that a student was on the field, and now we're, that's the whole team. Or depending on where it was and, and the contract age. So, and right now, we're limited, we're trying to get that away from the whole team and, and just like we're trying to do it in school as well.
When are you, when are you looking to adopt this, the new recommendations?
No. I don't, I don't think we need an action for. I think I'm, I'm asking for, as we go through, I, I, I think last week we saw a lot of this. I think once Karen made some calls last week, I think parents started, I'm not saying that they fell asleep. I think everybody becomes a little bit complacent because the sun's out, it's sixty degrees. Everybody's outside. We're back into school. Everything's safe. We are safe. We are, we are healthy. However, we still got to follow what we're doing. So on the weekends, I still continue to tell the kids, regardless, if I see some seniors, you know, hanging out in the afternoon, I say, stay in your pods. Stay with your friends. Do what you need to do. You know, we had an, we had an event here over the weekend. Lot of people here. It was run perfectly. Have not, have not seen an outbreak, a big, you know, situation. So I think what we're doing is, is implementing and striving for perfection, and nothing is perfection. But we're doing the best that we can. I think Karen's doing a great job figuring it out right away. Principals know they need to, and I think that the staff is doing a great job. But I do believe that we need to, we don't want kids out.
Right.
Ten, twelve days. We can get them back in within, you know, depending on where the weekend falls, within that five to eight-day range makes it a whole lot easier.
So, well, that actually brings me to my question. So I haven't gotten to the travel. Do you want to talk about the travel advisory next? Because I had questions about that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the governor has changed the order to an advisory. They strongly urge that we still continue to follow it, and we do not have to adopt those guidelines. So it would be my recommendation that we do not, at this time, adopt those guidelines.
So you want to keep us basically with the current, my, my only question was, can we do that? I mean, can we enforce a quarantine that the state is not requiring?
Well, the governor is still urging, and then he's making, it's a local decision.
It is.
So it's just like when the CDC changed their guidelines in December, and we did not adopt them in this building.
Right.
So there's two, there's two key pieces to it. One is, if you have a negative PCR, you can return. You're not forced to isolate. And if you do not want to do the PCR, then you isolate for ten days. So that's back down to the ten days from fourteen. The other piece is, there's no test required for any travel less than twenty-four hours out of state. So I would definitely support that.
Gotcha.
Because that's typically neighboring states. We are going to have a lot of students visiting colleges and picking up students from college, and that's, it is a hardship to do that. We saw that a lot with people going snow tubing in the winter just for one day, and it was just kind of inconvenient. But if people are making plans to go away, I think it's, especially over April vacation, it's very easy to arrange for the test. A lot of places that you're traveling to are providing a test so that you'll have that within the seventy-two hours of returning to Massachusetts. I would definitely recommend a week or two after April vacation, when we know that all of our staff have been vaccinated, when we know when the students or younger people might be vaccinated, then we could look at lifting that a little bit. But I think April vacation, without any kind of check and balance.
So, well, because I, I happen to know a bunch of families that are traveling on April Vacation Week. So will they have the ability to be tested hypothetically on Monday morning at the school before they come in? Like, as part of this process? Or will they have?
Well, they would, they would be considered an out-of-school contact.
Right.
So my concern is turning the nurse's office into a CVS drive-up.
Right. Okay.
So I think that part of the planning, people did phenomenal in February. So I just don't think it's unreasonable to kind of continue that because a lot of places, I mean, you can even get a test at the airport. A lot of places are providing it at the destination where you're going.
So, so the.
Any staff.
We're still going to ask them to get their own independent.
Yes.
COVID test when they get back. Okay.
Yeah. And it still remains that any student ten or under does not have to test. They can just provide a parent test. Even if a parent's fully vaccinated, they can provide the test for their child so the child doesn't have to test.
Can a parent who is fully vaccinated, do they still have to test a child under ten? Or is, if the parent is, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if I'm not vaccinated and I have to get a test and I use that as evidence for my child, what if I'm vaccinated? Can I just say, I'm vaccinated, my child doesn't need to test? Or do they then still have to test?
So a child under ten.
Yeah.
Ten or under does not have to test if they provide a parent that, or a guardian that they traveled with their negative test.
You would still test.
So, so if I didn't test because I've been vaccinated, that, that, that doesn't help my child?
No. No, so then your child would have to test.
Gotcha.
And any, any staff member that's traveling that is vaccinated will just, I'm not collecting the vaccination cards or that proof, but if they want to not quarantine or follow the advisory or the, whatever we adopt, they would have to just show me that documentation. I would just simply make a note of it, just like we do with the test results, that they are excused from quarantine because of.
Beautiful.
Full vaccination.
Okay. Any other questions? So you don't need a vote from us on any of this, just as, just your advisory and how we can.
I just want to let you know what direction.
Great.
I think that we should move in.
Thank you.
Tim, I just have one before we go into the action items. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Dr. Williams. We did have a passing of a former teacher who retired in the last year and a half. Mrs. Jerry Quigley, Mrs. Jerry Quigley over at, adjustment counselor over at the Central School. Dr. Williams worked with her for many years. I think could provide more information. But our condolences to her daughters. I know that the Central School is feeling it, and all of our district is, but, Dr. Williams?
Yeah, so as the superintendent mentioned, Jerry Quigley passed away last week from a long battle of leukemia. She leaves behind two daughters. Her daughter Melissa actually was a teaching assistant for a period of time at Central School, and her daughter Nicole. Nicole has been riding in the Pan-Mass Challenge in honor of Jerry for a number of years now. So in lieu of any donations or flowers, they asked to consider contributing to that. But, you know, Jerry was just such a bright light at Central School. She was there for many years, and, and some of the initiatives that Jerry started still live on within Central School. Racksters and the Random Acts of Kindness that go on in February, that initiated from Jerry. The social detectives that students become, learning how to identify social cues when making friendships. She was always the first to, you know, join in and, and create opportunities for us to give back to our students and, and our families. So she will, you know, sorely be missed by, by all and has left a lasting impression on Central School.
So sad. I know my children were very fond of her, so. It's awful. Our thoughts go out to their family, for sure. Thank you. All right. Public comment. We did, we have no one here for public comments, so we will move beyond that. Action items, we have a few. I would take a motion to approve the school committee minutes from the February ninth. We actually should do these separate because, Rob, I don't think you were one. What's that?
I wasn't there for the.
Okay, we'll just do them separately. I would take a motion to accept the school committee minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-one. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Rob abstains. I would take a motion to accept the school committee minutes of March third, twenty twenty-one. And I think, were you not at that one?
No, I was there.
Okay, it was the next one.
The one I wasn't there, it was February, whatever, there was a one at the end of February, and it's not here.
Wait a minute. We didn't meet on March third and ninth, did we?
Is that a third of the budget meeting?
Oh, that's right. Okay.
It was the last one in February, which is not here for a minute.
And we're not at the minutes from the second meeting in February?
They didn't post already.
We did, okay.
We did it on February ninth because they were over.
Okay.
So we.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'm sorry. So I'll take a motion for the March third minutes.
All moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll take a motion to approve the March ninth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
All moved.
By Ellen. Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
Abstain, Amanda abstains. That's right. I knew there was someone missing from that second meeting. Okay. I would take a motion to approve accounts payable warrant thirty-nine SV dated three twenty-four twenty-one.
All moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve payroll warrant thirty-eight PS dated three seventeen twenty twenty-one.
All moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to, oh, so this is our annual vote to accept, continue to accept students under school choice per Mass General Law. We have to vote on this annually. So this is a vote to continue to accept students under school choice in grades seven to twelve for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
All moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Caitlin Ross, Gordon W. Mitchell School teacher, has requested two personal days on April fifteenth and sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. You can all read her reasoning per the contract, teacher contract. That needs to be approved by school committee. So I would take a motion to approve the two personal day requests on April fifteenth and sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
All moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
We have action on the policy subcommittee updates of proposal of, excuse me, the policy subcommittee updates of policy. The policy subcommittee updates of policies listed below and introduced at our prior meeting. So I would take a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, so how do I want to say this? Policies, section I instruction, section J students as updated at the prior meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is, anything else? Superintendent, anything else for us?
We have to do these, action is required, this was a new.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped, you're right. I'm sorry. I would take a motion to approve the new policies recommended by the policy subcommittee listed below. File IE, organization of instruction and file JCA assignment of students to schools.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
Nope. I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you. And congratulations on a successful reopening. Take a motion.
Well done.
It feels nice to be back with everybody here.
Yeah.
I just want to say it was a pleasure working with you, Rob.
Oh, thank you.
And I will miss you.
You will be missed, Rob. Thank you for all, for your years of service.
Thank you.
Take a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. I will visit Teresa in the very near future.